Good evening, I would like to welcome you to the city council meeting of the city of Lenore for Tuesday, February 20th, 2018. We welcome you here this evening. As we get ready, we will go in just a minute to a moment of silence and then we'll remain standing, please, for our pledge of allegiance. Before we do that, I would like for you to keep several people in your thoughts and prayers. We are glad that Councilmember Rohr's wife Lisa is home from the hospital and doing well, and we've been keeping her in our prayers, and we will continue to do that.
I appreciate that.
Yes, sir.
I appreciate everybody's prayers. She's doing great.
Good, we're glad to hear that.
She was touch and go there for awhile, man.
Yeah, we know you were, so we were glad that she is doing better. And also would like to mention Councilmember Purdue's mother, Jeanette Conway, and we want to keep her in our thoughts and prayers as she continues to find out things going on. We're working, I know they're working toward that, and talk about the strong person I know she is, so we'll keep her in our thoughts and prayers very much.
Todd and I saw each other more than we expected to last week.
Yes, I understand that.
Every day for a week. We were a couple of doors down from each other the whole time.
Heard you guys were keeping the hospital busy up there.
That's alright, but just not there, right?
Right, right, absolutely.
I know too.
And we'd also like to keep in our thoughts and prayers, the family of Reverend Larry Smith, we understand that his wife has passed away, and we don't know all the details of it yet. Of course Reverend Smith is one of our police chaplains, and we're honored to always have him a part of it, but we'd like to keep his family in our thoughts and prayers as they move into this next phase, and we'll be thinking about them. So if you will, please join me as we rise for our moment of silence and remain standing Thank you. Please salute the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I would like to also welcome tonight, our new director of our public works, Mr. Jared Wright. We are glad to have Jared back with us, and we look forward to working with you. Thank you for agreeing to be a part of our city again. We're really excited about that. And of course Chief Frisco and Mr. Charles Beck are in their waning days, I guess, with us, but...
It's last council meeting.
Yeah, I guess it is, your last council meeting officially, so, gosh, that's sad. I don't even want to think about that.
Well, let's make them come to the budget, Rick.
Okay, you have to come Friday. They'll be there, I think, anyway. But we, as you know, we certainly have always appreciated everything you guys have done to be a part of our city, and as we've said in our past meetings when we've been with you, we will miss you, but we will look forward, I know, for both of you and your retirements, and we'll be seeing you more, and we're gonna be dragging you back for all kind of things, but we look forward. And March 6th is when we will be celebrating with both Charles and Chief Frisco at our meeting, so we look forward to that. So thank you. Our first, tonight, we have a special recognition. We'd like to recognize our Boy Scout troop, number 254. Amy Green is the, what do we call it, pack leader?
Assistant scout master.
Assistant scout master, thank you. And we are glad to have y'all with us this evening. Mr. Bill, Councilmember Bill, has been with them this afternoon and took them through pitching about the city and all the things that were going on, and Mr. Bill, anything you want to add to it?
Well, I was really very glad to talk to you this afternoon, and I appreciate you coming and being interested in city government, and hopefully you'll be able to earn a merit badge from part of what you've done today, so keep up the hard work.
And we have a pen for you, we'd like to recognize, and we're gonna shoot a picture if the council doesn't mind, with the scout troop, for evidence that they did come and they were here.
You have to get it for their badge. They must wear that.
Is that Lenore?
No, no, get where you can get your picture.
Okay. Alright, can you put the...
Y'all look good.
Alright, I want to take a couple with the flash and a couple without the flash, okay? Stay smart. Alright, one, two, three, cheese. One more time, one, two, three, cheese. Alright, I can rest. What do you want to say? One, two, three? Emoji? One, two, three, just be happy, smile. One, two, three, emoji. I think I got it.
Ladies and gentlemen, I just wanted to thank you all for the opportunity to bring these fine young boys so they can learn about what it means to be a responsible citizen of Lenore, and how they might participate better in our process and better help as they move through their badges. All these boys have been active in the troop, many of them have just come from a merit badge university where they've been learning about a variety of subjects, but citizenship is near and dear to my heart, and we appreciate your time and hospitality. Thank you.
Thank you. Amy, where are y'all, you're based out of?
Trip 254, First United Methodist Church.
Methodist Church, okay, that's what we thought. Thank you, thank you for your work with this fine group of young men, and we appreciate the scout. Scouting program is great, always, we love going and being part of that. Cub Scouts all the way through, it's a great program, so hope you will continue it, hope you all reach the coveted Eagle Scout, that would be wonderful. I know it takes a lot of work, but we wish you the best of luck, and thank you for volunteering to want to do some projects in our community, and we'll certainly help get some things to you and let you know about that, so.
Mr. Mayor, they're getting ready to have a banquet of some sort, I understand, and selling tickets for it, I believe, aren't you?
Our scout card sales will start up very soon. We expect to receive our cards at the end of this week, hopefully, and we would love for any help in supporting scouting in the community. Thank you for asking.
Thank you, sir.
I've already been hit up.
We thought you were gonna volunteer to pick up one for all. Thank you again for being with us. Our next presentation is a group called The Jarheads, and you guys will have to explain that to us when we get here, an Envirothon team, which consists of five students from Caldwell Early College, which will present their service learning project to our council tonight. The project is geared toward Total Educational State Forest, here in, of course, in the county. Envirothon is an environmental knowledge competition, and this team competes under the 4H umbrella, and since the Early College does not recognize this program, they also won a state competition in 2017, so we welcome the Jarheads with us this evening. Who's our spokesperson? Come up and...
Well, I actually can't say who's leading our team up here, so I wouldn't...
That'd be great, great, we'd love that.
We can all tag him a little bit, but just a little bit of an explanation behind the name, in case you guys who don't know, Jarheads is a term given to those in the Marine Corps. And our wonderful sponsoring leader that has been with us for many, 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 many years is a Marine, because once Marine, always a Marine, so you can't say ex-Marine. And so we decided to...
Would you, who is, tell us who?
Charles Stevenson.
How are you, sir? Glad to have you with us.
And so we decided to adopt the name just kind of in honor of him for giving his time and effort to us.
Okay. Cool.
So we're gonna start right off.
So who are we? And we're obviously, like you said, we're the Envirothon team, we're under the Caldwell County 4H umbrella, and we really focus on environmental stewardship and environmental education, which you'll see is shown through in our service learning project.
Hi, I'm Bailey McLean, and I'm wildlife expert. We're all seniors at the Early College High School.
My name is Deanna, I'll do a little bit of all of the subjects.
My name is Griffin Yosaver, and I'm the soil specialist.
I'm Renee Austin, and I specialize in current environmental issues, which changes from year to year.
And I'm Sam Miller, and I'm the forestry expert.
I'm Zachary McLean, and I'm our aquatics expert.
What is Envirothon exactly? Well, we have a competition every year that challenges us in these five subjects that we just listed.
And so with the five subjects, like we said, we won't go into too much detail to not bore you guys and not waste your guys' time, but it delves really deep into each of the knowledge, and it's not just reading a book, you've also got to go out in the field and learn a little bit, it just kind of fosters the next generation of environmental stewards. Like for me, since I'm the soil expert, I can go out and, you know, take a handful of soil and with a little bit of water, I can tell you the approximate composition of that soil, of sand, silt, and clay, and so then we have to take that knowledge and apply it towards stuff that's happening today.
So every year, we compete at a regional, a state, and hopefully a national level, and at these different levels of competition, we take tests in our respective subjects.
So service, every year we do a service project to give back to the community.
And this is also a statewide competition, so it's not only to give back to our community who supported us throughout our schooling and throughout the Envirothon Club itself, but it is also for competition.
And so one of the things that we like to live by is, love Albert Einstein, and he had a quote that perfectly sums what we try to do in our day-to-day and what we do as a team, is that only a life lived in service to others is worth living. And as Sam mentioned, we really do this to try to give back to the community, because all of us pretty much grew up and were raised right here in Caldwell County, many of us right here almost in Lenore and gone to the public schools, and so not only do we do an environmental side, helping the wildlife and that kind of stuff, we also try to give back to the next generation of environmental stewards.
So last year's project was, it was a bit of a multifaceted project. We worked within the elementary schools, we worked with fifth graders to teach them about stream health, and then we actually went into the field and we removed a blockage in Zax Forks Creek, it was over by Wilson Fields. So we worked with the city of Lenore and all their utilities, and we're grateful for that, they actually helped us pull out the blockage, and the stream has become extremely clear since then. We actually did a drone flyover, took some pictures, and we were able to see the difference that it made in the stream itself.
Okay, so in going with that, our plan for this year was to add on to that, but from the pictures that we saw from the drone flyover and our analysis of the stream itself, it's perfectly healthy, so we needed a new plan to take a multifaceted approach and make sure that we were still gearing our project toward environmental education.
So with this year's project, we went to the schools yet another year, and this year we went with the same sort of course of study. We focused on stream health, so we talked about formation of the stream, we talked about erosion, and all this time we were relating it to the state standards, so we could help students prepare for their EOGs, as well as just take a little bit of a different spin on it.
So one of the first things, it's kind of like we did for you, we created a presentation, it was a lot more interactive, we asked the kids questions, we actually showed them their favorite scientist, Bill Nye, short little clip of him kind of explaining what's the difference between erosion and weathering, and how that impacts us.
Okay, so then the other part of our presentation was a stream table, so we tried to use all of the things in our presentation and apply them, so we showed them an example using a stream table, which is basically just a table where you can run water through, we use sand in the table, and it shows how eventually water will create a stream and how it erodes away at the soil. So we tried to first teach them and then show them a real-life example, that way they really got a grasp of the subjects we were trying to teach.
And this way they could also interact with the table itself. We had them put in rocks and trees and all different stuff to simulate a forest, so they could learn how to prevent erosion themselves.
Also, we had them do a little bit of team competition, we had them do a filter, we gave them dirty water, and we let them see how, once the water was dirty, even though they tried their best to make a filter that would get all of the pollutants out of it, it wasn't completely clean again, so once the water's dirty, it takes a lot more effort to get it clean again.
Our service project this year also has a component at Total Educational State Forest, which has multiple components.
First off, we have the trail tagging, so if any of you have ever been out to Total State Educational Park, you may have hiked their trails and realized that some of their directional signs are a little bit faded, they would like for us to repair those and just spray over those so that, make it a little bit clearer for people walking out there and learning more about the forest.
So another thing that you might have noticed if you were walking the trails, that some of them, they're starting to form ditches throughout the trail, and that's because they're at a pretty good slope, so when it rains, the water will run down those steep slopes really quick and bring, and pick up soil and deposit it at the bottom. Well, so what we're trying to do to combat that, that way the trails stay easy for people to use and it stays healthy, is create something called a water bar, or it'll be multiple throughout the trail. So basically, these are just bars of dirt and like wood that you make throughout the trail, it's like a little hump in the trail, that will break the flow of the water and divert the water flow, that way it won't flow so fast and carry so much dirt, so it'll hopefully keep the trail stable and healthier for a longer period of time.
Also, part of our service project was refurbishing or maintaining the outdoor classrooms. Some of the benches that the children sit on, they were getting rotted, or they were sharp in some places, so we put a new top over them and sanded it, so that way none of the children would get hurt when they sat down, and some of the bottoms of the benches were rotting out, so we made sure to replace those so that they'd be stable for them to sit on.
And so here are just a couple of the pictures, just kind of show you what we did. It was hard to get the camera out there and have everyone working, so there's not a ton. What we go through, those are some of the sized boards that we had to lug out in the middle for us to replace the tops. Here we are sanding them, because again, you don't want the children getting cut, or you don't want them getting splinters from the top, so not only did we have to cut the slides, which you'll see in the next picture, and screw them down, but we also gave them a nice sanding, just enough so that way it's a smooth edge on it, and then here you see us cutting them down to size in order to fit the bars.
And we also did some, we're going to do some minor trail maintenance, there's a staircase at Total on one of the trails that the wood's beginning to rot, and the railings are really unsafe for hikers, so we'll try to use them, and so what we're gonna do is we're gonna take those out and replace them with new wood and make them more sturdy and safe for people at Total.
So also what went along with this, the Envirothon team and actually Trip 254 helped with this a lot. I recently did my Eagle project, and this also goes along with the environmental stewardship and education portion of our projects. We all went out and we went, we used GoFundMe to raise about $950 towards the cause, and we put out some tree identification tags on the Lenore Greenway. So you might have seen this, walking along, so really it just tells you what type of tree it is, and hopefully raises your awareness for the sort of biodiversity we have right here at home. You don't need to go far to see how pretty cool nature is.
So just wanted to again tell you guys, thank you, we're gonna go through, and we're each going to deliver kind of like a personal statement, something we learned, because not only is it to help the community, but also part of the service project is again, growing ourselves and growing as a team, and so helping the community is great, but it's, you've got to learn something out of it, so we're just gonna go around and tell a little bit of what we might have learned, and then we'll say some questions if you guys have it.
So I learned a lot about, throughout the course of these projects, we had to get in touch with a lot of professional people, so getting in touch with these adults, so you had to make that initial contact. A lot of these include phone calls, emails, or just maybe even casual texts, but even so, these were all professional correspondences, so I learned a lot about making these connections and talking with people in a professional manner.
I personally learned that there's not just one way to serve your community, and there's not just one way to learn about environmental science, it's not just about sitting and studying some material, it's about getting out and getting hands-on experience, and really getting out into the community to make these connections that Sam's talking about.
This is my first year here, so I've learned a lot about the ecosystem around us that we see every day and how important it is to our everyday lives.
What I learned is that it really does take a whole lot of work to keep up with these trails in this educational forest. You think, once you make a trail and it's out there, it's just there, and it's gonna be fine forever, but really, it takes a lot of maintenance to keep something like this up and to really keep the environment safe.
Well, what I learned was, during our project, we had to present to children, and typically you don't think anything when you're presenting to a board of adults or your peers, but when you're talking to children, you begin to understand that you gotta, you want to make them understand what you're talking about, because you want them to learn just as much as you do, so you have to really just learn how to talk to them, and that was really fun to do.
So one of the coolest things for me, again, kind of bouncing off of her, was working with the children, I do have a younger brother, so I'm kind of toning it down a little bit, but for me, what was amazing is just how many of those kids are interested, that not all of them knew exactly everything we were talking about, we hit every aspect of all of our five subjects in the presentations, but they were still interested, and so it was really cool and refreshing for me, because even if I stood up there and I said, "Well, you know, you can look at our common soil types in Caldwell County, and we've got the Ulta soils and the Parasols and so on," they were still there listening, and part of it is that, you know, we are youth, and so it's kind of like the older brother teaching down to them, but it was still really refreshing for me, as I said, because they were interested in it, they loved playing with the stream table, that were led, they were able to see that by just possibly planting a few trees can have such a big impact near their home or near the stream, that it doesn't always take such a huge project that we're doing that every little person can have that kind of effect. The other thing was, again, with the water clean cleanliness, is that just how much work, for one, that the city has to put into cleaning all the water, and we actually have toured some of those facilities, and just how much energy and time and money goes into it, and I think it was really eye-opening for them, and also that we gave them that as a competition. We gave them materials, we gave them five minutes and said, "Hey, look, build something." And just, one of the groups, I actually drank the waterfront, which sounds insane, it had oil, it had pepper, it had salt, it had sand, it had rock, it had paper towels, it had coffee grounds, but they were able to, using their ingenuity, come up with a filter design that cleaned the water almost to the cleanliness of the water you're drinking now. So that was one thing amazing for me, just to see the next generation of coming up, and you know, they always say, you know, the kids are the next generation, they're gonna be the next engineers, they're going to be the next leaders of the world, and we got to see some of that firsthand, of just how brilliant some of the kids are, especially in our small Caldwell County and some of the small schools we went to. So if you guys have any questions that we would be able to answer for you guys?
I don't have any questions, but I have two comments.
Alright.
One, thank all of you, because what you were talking about with the younger children, they look up to you, they're interested in what you're doing, and that gives them a role model to follow, and Bailey, you said, you know, talking with adults is not a problem, it's just the kids, but talking with adults, I'm very impressed with all of you for the presentation that you've given tonight. So thank you very much.
And I would mention, Police Chief Brown has applications in the back of the room. He'd like to hire you right now.
Well, I'm curious, I want to know what you guys want to do with this, where do you want to take it in your, as you continue your education? I'd like to hear from each one of you.
Alright, I'll start off, first of all, for me, I want to go to NC State, dealing a little bit more with the food science aspect of stuff, but that kind of goes into, we didn't work as much this time, but that goes into the agriculture side of it, and so part of it is, doing this gave us the understanding of some of the state forests, and actually, we all had to apply as state interns. So we now actually all intern for the state, which is something really cool to say.
So what grades, where are you in your education now?
Senior at the Early College.
So me personally, I would like to go to Chapel Hill to go to med school eventually, and even though that doesn't relate directly to all this environmental science and conservation, I'm gonna carry with this with me forever. My dad is, is a retired forester from the NC Forest Service, so it's always been in my family, and I'm planning to take it everywhere when they continue my service and continue teaching people about how we can help the environment.
And in a similar way, I'm interested in attending NC State University and to major in environmental science, of course. I've been interested in current environmental issues since I started doing this competition in middle school, and I really want to follow through with services, Sam said.
And I'm planning to go to Savannah College of Art and Design and major in visual effects, and that's very unrelated to this, but...
Well-rounded. This just relates to mine.
Yeah, and you know, I've grown up in this ecosystem, and so I want to do everything in my power to protect this beautiful nature that I've always loved, so.
So I'm kind of in the same boat as Sam, I mean, I'm wanting to apply to NC State, but I am wanting to go to med school, but I'm definitely gonna keep on trying to serve and try and, God, what's the word? I still definitely want to try and help with the ecosystem and still try and be as good of an environmental steward as I can.
Well, I also want to go to NC State, and that's...
Oh, yeah.
One, one Tar Heel, one Tar Heel. That's awesome, that's awesome.
That's great.
I am very impressed with you guys. You guys are really, we've had teenagers come and talk to us before, and you guys are about the most comfortable and really well-prepared we've ever had. I know it's tough coming to talk in these sorts of environments, and you guys are doing incredibly well. One thing I did want to say is, talking about working on some of the handrails, you said the staircase, my oldest son is visually impaired, and he uses staircases like that a lot, and there are so many places where he gets, he gets splinters and that sort of thing, so I very much appreciate your doing that, that's gonna do him a lot of good, and I'm sure it will for a lot of other people as well.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. It's great, what you're doing, I tell you, we're very excited, we of course love our Early College and glad that we have that as part of our community, thank you for being a part of that, and what you're doing, wow, I can see, come back this way when all this is done, we got plenty of jobs here for you, I can tell you that, and we appreciate the service that you are doing, so.
And to your Jarhead back there, you've done a good job.
Yes, you have.
We're very proud.
Yeah. Okay, well, we're gonna, I've got something to give you guys, and we'd like to shoot a picture with you, as we did earlier with our scout troop, and so you'll join us right here. Alright, that's a good-looking group.
And the council.
Council's up there. Alright, I think I can see everybody. Alright, I'm gonna do with flash and without. One, two, three, emojis. And without. One, two, three. Awesome, thank you. We're sort of glad that you're, you're so interested in NC State and Chapel Hill. There is a great school here called Appalachian Up the Mountain. Would like, would like to throw that in anyway for a little.
There's one farther today. It's just Wake Forest University down there. Some fine CPAs have come out of that.
Go Diggs.
And, and, and.
Go Diggs.
There you go.
Few music videos.
Well, we're, we're proud of all of you. Thank you for what you're doing. And thank you for being with us this evening. You're welcome to stay as long as you'd like with us. We're going to move on into our agenda. We have one matter scheduled for a public hearing this evening. That's an amendment. This is a non-conforming, single-family structures. We're holding the hearing to consider amending our city's Code of Ordinances, Appendix A, Section 704.1 of the Lenore Zoning Ordinance as related to non-conforming, single-family structures. And our staff, who has been working on this, recommends approval of the submitted ordinance. Our planning director, Jenny Willock, is with us. I'm going to open the public hearing. If there is anyone who would like to address the council during this time, please feel free to come through. I'm going to let Jenny kind of bring us up to date with this, if you will.
Well, that's sort of a tough act to follow.
It is.
This is a really straightforward code amendment, very minor change. I think essentially what it does is change the code to reflect what most people think the code already says, that if your house burns down and you have a non-conforming setback, that you would be able to reconstruct in that same non-conforming setback. Happy to answer any questions that you all have.
I just have a quick procedural question.
Go ahead.
It says that staff recommends approval. Did this go before the planning board?
It did.
Okay. I assume they had no problem with it?
They did. Yeah, they, they recommended approval.
Okay.
Did it not say it?
It just, in, in the agenda, it said staff recommends approval. I may, I may have missed. Yeah, it says staff and planning board recommendation on the actual council action form, so.
Yeah, it, it went to planning board last time.
Okay.
I've been kind of busy. I haven't read it as closely as sometimes I do.
That's my own excuse.
We'll, we'll excuse you.
Yeah, I appreciate that. Thanks.
Anyone have any questions of Jenny while she is here? Okay. Anyone would like to address the council concerning this issue as we are in a public hearing? Or ask any questions? Okay, seeing none, I will close the public hearing, turn it over to council for any action and/or discussion.
We had a chance to discuss at the last committee, the hole, and I think she said it best. It just cleans up what we all thought was there to begin with. And so I'll make a motion that be approved as recommended by staff.
Okay. We have a motion from Councilmember Purdue to, for this to be changed. It's a non-conforming as presented by staff. Anyone else? If not, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Thank you. That carries unanimously. Thank you for your work on that. Okay, we'll move on then. We have two on our consent agenda items tonight. Item A are minutes from the city council meeting of Tuesday, February 6th, 2018. And item B is a speed limit request for fair lane drive. And our staff is recommending that council call for a public hearing to be held on Tuesday, March 6th, 2018, to consider an adoption of a 20 mile per hour speed limit for the entire length of fair lane drive, allowing for posting at the discretion of the Public Works Director. At that time, that will be our new Public Works Director, by the way. We'll get him up to date on all that. We do have a note, the city's Code of Ordinances, Appendix A, Traffic Section 114, 20 mile per hour speed limit on the following streets will be amended to reflect this change. So, geez, action on that?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion from Councilmember, really, you like this at this point anyway.
Just call for a public hearing.
I'm calling for a public hearing.
You'll talk about it later, won't you?
You'll hear my beefs later.
Don't get too happy.
We have a motion from Councilmember Rohr to, to call for a public hearing concerning fair lane drive and the change to a 20 mile per hour speed limit. Any other discussion or question? If not, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Thank you. That carries unanimously. Okay, we'll move on. It's time on our agenda for requests and petitions of any citizens. If there's anyone that would like to address the council tonight that already hadn't in our audience, please, you're welcome to do so at this time. All right. Seeing no one at this point, we'll move on then to report. We have no reports of boards and commissions tonight, so we'll move on to the report and recommendations of the city manager, Mr. Hildebrand.
Mr. Mayor, council, you have in your packets some items for information for you. On Friday, the city council will be holding their annual strategic planning retreat. That'll be held at, from 8:30 to 2 o'clock at the Blue Ridge Energy New District Office there on Cooperative, I think the address is actually Cooperative Way, but it's off Blounton Boulevard. So be sure to attend that. That'll be a day-long event, but I think it'd be very informative for everybody. The planning board will meet on Monday, February 26th, at 5:30 in these chambers. The committee of the whole will meet on Tuesday, February 27th, at 8:30, Third Floor of City Hall. The Foothills Regional Airport Authority will meet on Wednesday, February 28th, at noon. And then, as the mayor mentioned earlier, we'll be having a reception for Fire Chief Briscoe and Public Works Director Beck on March 6th, from 3:30 to 5:30 in these chambers. And welcome folks to attend that, so we can honor them for their service. Thanks, guys. We have one item tonight for action. Last fall, several members of council attended the National League of Cities. And at that event, you ran into some folks that I guess were skateboarding, skate park experts. And I think you talked about, how do we go back and increase usage of our facility here in Lenore? Right now, the facility's, I guess, behind a fence, and you have to have parker staff out there to go back, open it up, and supervise while you're there. Their suggestion was to go back and have it unsupervised, but post the appropriate signage. We've talked to the city of Morganton, who recently opened a big skateboard park over there. That's what they're doing. Also, I think Mr. Story said, Marion, Newton, Asheville, and Boone. So several facilities are doing this. We've talked to our insurance carrier and also the city attorneys reviewed this, and they both say this is probably the appropriate way to go. Still, you need to wear your knee pads, your arm helmets and all those things, but this is probably the appropriate way to go. And so you can add anything if you think.
From the standpoint of liability, the legislature statute creates immunity to a point, and that's what, from, from that standpoint, enables you to do this.
Is, is there any, the hours of oper, what will happen with the hours of operation, Kenny? Are there any changes to that? Or since there's no supervision going to be required if this ordinance passes, will they be, can you go skate at about any hour that you want?
What we'll do is we'll set park hours. I'll bring that to you guys and make sure you approve that before we do it. The one in Morganton, they open from daylight till 10:00 PM.
Okay.
And then it's closed after that.
Okay.
I don't know that I want to keep it open until 10:00, but that's something that we'll look at. Since our facility closes at 9:00, we might cut it off at that time, if you guys approve that.
Is the skate park itself lit?
No, sir.
Okay.
We have some floodlights around it, but it is not lit.
Okay.
But, but while the park is, is open, there will be staff in the, in the facility?
Yes, while the park is open, and that's another thing we'll have to look at. We don't have staff there on Sundays, but if we elect to close it on Sundays, that's just something we need to discuss on that, from that point of it. We do have people in the park on Sundays using shelters and things like that. That's the only time that we would not have staff on the premises unless we have events going on, on Sundays like the ball fields or something like that.
But with this signage, we won't actually have someone physically standing there supervising them. They'll be, they'll be on their own. They just need to follow the rules as posted.
That is correct.
Yeah, right. Yeah, you would want them to be able to skate on Sunday if they were there, too. That's the whole, the whole purpose. But you don't want somebody at 1:00 in the morning making noise when up and down the ramp.
That's correct. And we will look at it and, you know, set the hours. But I think leaving it open on Sundays would benefit the park from being used. And that's our general purpose, is to get more usage out of, out of the skate park. And it takes away from my staff when I have to put somebody out there five hours a day just to watch two people skate. And, you know, the hours now, we don't open until 12:00 PM. And sometimes we have people come, this is when school is in. We have people come in that's older that want to skate. We have to tell them, we don't open until 12:00. So, you know, we've got some issues there. So I think a lot of this will clear all that up.
I think the idea was, of course, to make it so that the people who are doing the skateboarding want to use the park. You know, right now, the way it is, we're not getting those, they're not using it. They're locked out. They're locked out, yeah.
They're locked out. And, and the, like the law states, as long as you wear your helmet, knee pads and elbow pads, we will have staff monitoring it, and we won't be on, out there eight hours, 10 hours a day watching. But if we go outside and someone doesn't have on helmets, elbow pads, and knee pads, then we can ask them to leave. That's part of the liability issue there with the signage.
I have, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
If that particular part of the, of the park is not well-lit, should we consider a dawn to dusk, dawn to sunset rule? Because depending on the time of the year, you know, that 9:00 time might be well after dark.
Well, yeah, we, we can, like I said before, what we'll do is, is get together and set those hours depending on seasons of the year.
Okay.
You're exactly right. We do have tennis courts around that are, that are lit some, and they are on timers. So we can take a look at that and see what we need to do as far as making sure we're covered as far as liability with lights or no lights.
I'd like to see, just get an estimate to us on, on what the lighting might would cost to get it sufficiently lit.
Just on timer, you know, dedicated lighting.
Well, I'm curious to see what the, what the usage will be. Now, would you kind of take the walls down, just let it?
Yeah, we might want to see what the usage looks like.
Let them see.
It'd be good to have an idea of what the cost might be.
Oh, yeah. I, I agree with you. I agree.
Materials laying around, Charles, that we could maybe use for lighting. I don't know. What do you think? What do you think Jared would?
Just a quick comment. I mean, I, I don't think it, that you have to have the lighting that you have for tennis courts or, or ball field lighting for baseball, softball. It could be spotlights that light the court up because it's not, you know, it's not a huge skate park like Morganton has, has built, you know.
I also think they even have lights on there.
They do not have lights on theirs. And they do not have fencing around, around their skate park either.
Right.
Okay.
Could be like a security light. Could be several. Okay. All right. We'll look into that.
Okay.
Yeah, good. Okay. Any other questions or comments from anyone? This was what, when we went to the NLC, this is what we heard from talking to the people who are experts on, on doing these things. This is what they recommend. And so we feel like we, you know, we want our park used. And, and that's, so that's what it's, that's what it's about. So I think this would be.
The guy we talked to was a vendor for a company, but we asked his advice on how to increase the usage. And, you know, he talked about his product, but he also gave us good advice about trying to get people to use it more than we currently do. So that was good.
It was. Okay. You heard the recommendation then from the city staff, city management concerning the skate park ordinance. So I'll call for question if you.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion from Councilmember Rohr to approve this skate park ordinance amendment as presented. And I'm not going to read all the numbers to you again. You've got that. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Thank you. That carries unanimously. Thank you for, Mr. Story, for your work on that and putting that together for us, working with it. Okay, we'll move on then to, we have a report and recommendation from our city attorney.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Would like to present to you for your consideration, some reappointments to our, our boards and commissions. I would recommend to you, these are all reappointments for our planning board, Mr. Tim Scobie, who has previously served, of course, doing a good job. Our Lenore Tourism Development Authority, Dr. Dana Clark, and this is Glenda Wilson. For our Lenore Business Advisory Board, Therese Oomquist. And for our Recreation Advisory Board, Mr. Scott Barnett and Mr. Eric Wobenowitz. I present those to you for your consideration, and we will bring them up again at our meeting on March the 20th. So these are like, again, say, these are all reappointments. They've all served. And we all, as I always do, we talk with those who are over the particular boards, make sure they are doing their job and attending the meetings and all that. And all these have been recommended to be reappointed by the, the different boards that they serve on. So I'll present that to you. All right. Is there any report from our council members? Anything that you have to bring up? Yes, sir.
I often get up in the mornings and check my email. Some people don't believe that, but I do. And check my messages. But in checking my email, I, I just noticed the reports that Joshua gives to us on a daily or weekly or as events occur. And I just want to let you know that I appreciate that, keeping us informed as to activities and what's going on. One in particular, the resurfacing, I read the word milling, and I didn't know what milling was. So I looked up milling. So I was educated today to learn that before resurfacing, there must be some milling.
Get you out there and let you do a little bit of that.
So Josh, I would just like to say thank you for, for what you do is keeping us informed as to what's going on. And also, Ms. Shirley, how you keep us informed as to what we need to do and all of the things that you help us with. So guys, thank you so much for what you're doing.
Better thank everybody. Who knows, you're going to be in trouble.
Thank everybody. I'll get around to them next.
Yeah, thank you very much. You are, we appreciate all the information. It is really going well and we're getting a lot of great information out there, keeping not only us informed, but our city informed and, and others. We know there's websites that are being worked on. We're trying to tile those things together. And there's a lot of great things that'll be just around the corner. So we appreciate the work on that. All right, we do have a closed session tonight pursuant to North Carolina General Statutes 143-318, 111, subsection A, subsection four, subsection five. And this, the council will enter into this session to discuss economic development and property acquisition, if we expect. Okay. Nothing formal should be coming out of that for a vote tonight. And I'll entertain a motion. Let's move. Have a motion to go into closed session from Mayor Pro Tem Willis. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? We'll go to closed session. If you leave, thank you for being with us, guys. We appreciate it.